Good afternoon, let's go to today's board of trustee meeting coordinator at four oh two E M. Trudy, if you could please call the role.
Phil Palski.
Present.
Ismael.
Here.
Sheets.
Here.
Stanger.
Yeah.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Present.
Doctor Flamen.
Present.
MacTamey. Phil Chine.
Present.
Thank you everyone, if we could please hand over the question. I'd like to read the mission statement today, please.
Thank you.
One mission on the clock. We will read the mission statement today, please.
Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents, which special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments in the room today? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustee Board Meeting Minutes of September thirty to two thousand and twenty-four? Motion made by Mr. Beal, there is my.
Okay.
Backed by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the role.
Ismael.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Doctor Flamen.
Yes.
MacTamey. Phil Chine.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move into the presentation section of the meeting. And today we have Ms. Rose from Otrip to present the store award.
Thank you so much for inviting me to come and present this work here today. We do have a lovely flag that we already took out this venue. So, some of you um may remember, we have been here before, uh but not too recently. So just by way of introduction, uh the Ohio Transit Riskful Pool is a public enemy risk pool that has provided stable property casualty insurance to our public transit members for thirty years. This is actually our thirtieth year um this year. We have fifteen members across the state of Ohio, and those fifteen members run almost forty-five million miles. Um, so for Lake Tran, I know you were running about three and a half million miles, so um, Lake Tran's an important part of that process. So the store award is safe operations award recognition. It's a traveling award, so we have three divisions, and every year we award the lowest cost of risk for one hundred um miles annually, so um. We have three divisions, uh the large division which you are in, uh the other transits are Metro R T A, which is Akron, uh Stark area, which is Canton, uh Sorda, which is Cincinnati, Dayton, and Toledo are um the other transits in your division that we competed best. And so um, but having a low cost of risk isn't just about them. It is because you have achieved operational excellence feeds into that process. So how do you prevent claims? Every part of your operation is part of preventing those claims. So when it comes to planning around, your planners are, how are they looking at how those roads are laid out? And how would citizens be impacted in terms of getting out of help in the vehicle? Your maintenance, are they able to keep the buses in good operational conditions? If they're not running down and they're not having operational physical issues with buses, definitely causing accidents. Uh, to hiring, are you hiring um good drivers, putting them through the driver training? So the driver training that you use um was developed by the Ohio Transit Riskful Pool and is actually considered to be the number one driver training in America for public transit. Almost every public transit uses it. Um, and your people were part of developing that. Uh, when people watch those videos, they will see a Lake Tran bus or a Lake Tran driver may not have markings on it that takes such, but we are uh we are incredibly grateful because driver training, again, we talk about having a low cost of risk. That is a huge part of the process. So uh to tell you sort of how low your cost of risk is compared to the other members in your area, uh the lowest cost in your division, you had a two dollars and fifty-eight cent um cost per hundred miles. That compares to seven dollars and forty-three cents to the overall full average. And uh the next closest in your division was over four dollars. So that is a significantly low number. That cost of risk is really um almost amazing. Uh, it has kept its cost down, and uh sometimes people ask me, does that impact our premiums? The answer is absolutely yes. Uh, we is a very transparent underwriting formula for our members, and there's only one category that's double weighted, and that is your claim cost. So having that claim cost be as low as it is directly impacts your premiums and reduces them. So keeping your cost low and low in comparison to the other members. Your cost is so low that you would have competed overall in the Division One, where we see um members only having one claim or two claims a year. The overall average in Division One was a two dollar cost of loss, and you guys were at two dollars and fifty-eight. So the one last thing I'd really like to add is that to have this award be given to you over the last eighteen months, when you have gone through operationally, somewhat of a little people, I would say, um in terms of you're building this building, uh you're you've been adding on, you've been doing construction. I know Ben is adding routes and vehicles and um always looking into the future of public transit, and at the same time, operationally, you guys are just absolutely knocked it out of the park. So on behalf of the rest of the full members, I want to say thank you very much. Congratulations to you. I'm glad to return this to you because it actually has been, it's like two years, it's since it's been here, so I'm glad to bring it back, and hopefully it'll be good still.
Thank you very much. Did anyone have any questions or progress this time? Uh seeing none, I would like to thank everyone in the organization for their hard work in achieving that. Our motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, motion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to one twenty-one point twenty-two G one and further relative to one twenty-one twenty-two key for to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. So, motion made by Ms. Swanson, is there a second?
Welcome.
Second by Ms. Trudy, if you could please call the role.
Ismael.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Doctor Flamen. MacTamey.
Four.
Phil Chine.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Please on the record reflect the board's on training, if their information is important, yeah? And inviting our legal counsel and CEO to stay. Before we go to our next presentation, I would like to take a moment to congratulate Ms. MacTamey. Ms. MacTamey was just being the Lake County Council on Aging. She just won the Ruth A. Denzmore Senior Advocate Award, which is one of their most prestigious honors. So congratulations, Donna. The award is right here in front of us, MacTamey. And thank you for all the time you've dedicated to Lake Tran and to so many organizations in Lake County. Everyone has done a great job. So again, I'd just like to say thank you and congratulations, so much deserved.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, then I will turn the meeting over to you for results on the sidewalk grant applications. And everyone knows you have a sidewalk grant program, and I've been uh pretty good this time, and uh I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you, Brian. Um, yeah, so we are right on schedule with the timeline that we have previously previously presented. Um, we have received, we received five applications, and we have gone through them and reviewed all of them and have some recommendations for the board to consider. I'm not asking you to take any action tonight, this is just sort of a results and a review of what staff is recommending. Again, just a reminder, the board can do whatever it pleases, there is no requirement for us to do or not do this. This is completely sort of discretionary. If we move forward with the schedule that we have been on, um, we have September and October for review, and then in theory, we would put them on the board's agenda for next month for approval, should the board wish to do that. Um, this is just a reminder of the criteria, you had to be a municipality in Lake County, Ohio. Sidewalk needed to be along an N County fixed route bus. You needed to not have sidewalks existing, and then the project obviously needs to comply with ADA. Um, the ineligible activities were maintenance, decorative landscaping, not along a fixed route, roadway, nonprofit, or uh et cetera. Um, so we had a evaluation criteria that had a point system that kind of scored the applicants based on these things. Um, they got different points based on how well the project addressed each one of these items, which was how well it connects to a complete sidewalk sidewalk network. If it addresses a known hazard, um, the project sponsors local match contribution. Um, if it was part of a wider project or was gonna bring in additional funds from another source, and then um how it incorporates transit amenities such as shelters and benches. We had five applicants um with a total request of one point one million dollars. They came from Fairport, Mantarapainsville Township, Timberlake, and Willoughby. You can see what uh their requests were and what their local match may or may not have been. So um I'm not gonna necessarily read each one of these, I'm just gonna let you kind of look at them for a moment. I do have maps which should help better articulate, I think, what the projects are. But you can see, you know, Timberlake had a pretty expensive project, but they are only requesting two hundred thousand dollars of it. Uh, the second most expensive project was for, expensive project was for the city of Mentor. Um, this is kind of how they are spread out across the county, so you see quite a bit of diversity of Timberlake, you know, Willoughby, Mentor, Fairport, and uh Painsville Township, all of those are in the fixed route corridor, obviously, and in the ADA uh corridor. Uh, first proposed project was for Fairport Harbor, um, the bus stops are there on the top left. Um, what they have asked for is that piece of yellow sidewalk that is on Saint Clair Street that would provide access to the, from um the main drag in Fairport to the grander Landing Park and uh over the bridge into Fairport, or from Fairport to Painsville um would add some connectivity. Um, city of Mentor, it's here from Hopkins all the way to Heisley on Tyler Boulevard. Um, this is in front of the existing A W T building. Um, we, you know, the board, if you remember, we invested a good amount of money to improve the facility at A W T. Um, this corridor has a lot of uh walkers along, I do want to say this was also supported by Buyers Corporation. Uh, city manager got a letter of support from them and A W T. Um, so this is a pretty long stretch of sidewalk. Um, Painsville Township, Painsville Township uh requested one um along Bacon Road, I believe Bacon Road, yeah, or no, yeah. Um, this one, uh I'll kind of get to a little bit, but this really, in our opinion, while it connects to a fixed route bus, really doesn't meet the application criteria that we laid out. Um, should the board like this program and wish to continue it in the future, we may be, we may consider moderating, modi- modifying the evaluation criteria so that it provides connectivity to a bus route, but this is not actually along a fixed route bus. Uh, we think it's a meaningful project, but it doesn't technically meet the uh criteria we put out.
Where would the fixed route be in comparison to the ones on that they're proposing?
There isn't one, that's that's why it's not compliant with. Well, well, it is, there is one, see on the bottom of the map, the um that's twenty, North Ridge Road. There is a bus stop at that corner of Bacon Road and twenty, but the section of sidewalk on Bacon Road, there is not a fixed route bus on Bacon Road. And so it really doesn't fit, you know, our criteria said had to be along a fixed route bus. Um, this is the city of Timberlake, so this is a much bigger project, they also got ODOT to participate in. It's about a one point one million dollar project. Um, there's quite a number of bus stops along this stretch of road. Um, and they are asking for two hundred thousand dollars to help match their ODOT grant. So this is a pretty substantial, this is the biggest project. Um, this one did score the best because of the number of bus stops, the additional money provided uh by ODOT. And uh, you know, this being managed by ODOT will know we'll get a a good result, will be the result of it. Um, mayor of Timberlake has been advocating this for this project for a long time, so this would really add a really much needed piece of uh connectivity in Timberlake. Um, last but not least is the city of Willoughby, if you see that kind of highlighted section. If any of you have ever tried to walk this area of Willoughby, it is really goofy, and it's really difficult to do so. So the golf, the golf course is in Wickliffe, and there is sidewalk on that section of road. They have drawn a sidewalk with a GPS tool, which actually makes it look like there is a sidewalk. It's actually not a sidewalk, it's a GPS tool, and then they've highlighted it, so it's difficult to see, but this is in front of Pine Ridge, you know, there's about four thousand apartments there. This is a busy bus stop, we have a shelter there, it's kind of on an island where there's nothing around, there's no sidewalk connecting it. Um, I I can say when I first moved to Lake County, I lived in Pine Ridge. It is very difficult to navigate this area as a pedestrian, and so their objective is to connect over to the sidewalk that kind of ends just off of Som Center and then down to the sidewalk that Wickliffe has in uh by the golf course. Question?
Well, sure.
Some point, we had this question, I think you pointed out, there was a rider in a wheelchair that was navigating ninety-one.
Yes.
With this, I mean, yeah.
So their need, if you look towards the top right of this map, the need that they specifically had was dealt with with the uh the sidewalk project that the board actually already approved. So that shelter is now up on ninety-one, and I don't, I don't know the answer to your question, I'm not sure if they travel this part of road. The only part they mentioned was ninety-one specifically, right in front of that Wendy's area. Uh, the one Gary was talking about is, it's not in this map, you can't see it, but it's the Wendy's on ninety-one, the part of a separate project.
Okay.
Surely.
Why doesn't it stand? Years and years and years, why doesn't it seem like it should do? What's on your mind?
Agree with you, but I can't, I don't know what their reasons for not doing it.
Positive. Thanks.
Sure. So um that the Willoughby project uh requested one hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight eighty.
How much is the prize, can you go back to the next slide, send it again? Different total.
Oh, I think this, this is the summary, I mean, I can, I can go back to this. So they did not have any local match. So the the total request was one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, basically. Yes.
Was the local match a requirement?
No, it got you additional points, uh if you if you provided it, but it did not, uh it was not required. Did I? I can, I, this was just for presentation tonight, yeah. Sure, yeah, I after the meeting, I'll be happy to to get a copy to everybody.
Um, you got a wish, are there one? Um, how much weight is put on safety? Improved safety for our, there is a passing.
I don't remember the scoring rubric, Andrea, can you?
Um, the maximum points for um addressing a known pedestrian or safety hazard or issue was twenty points out of a hundred.
And what now?
Um. I can look that up.
Anything would be helpful. Circulate the scoring rubric.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be very helpful, because it's just off the top without having all the data. The Fairport Harbor and the Painsville Township one didn't excite me too much, but I'm not basing that on objective data, I'm basing it on subjective.
We'll send out, we'll, we can send out a copy of the applications and the scoring uh sheets that we prepared for the board. Um, in addition to this uh list, so in our evaluation process, the point, the way the points shook out for us, and again, this is all subject to whatever the board wishes to do. Um, was Timberlake scored the highest? And so this is our ranking, so it was Timberlake, Willoughby, Mentor, Fairport, and Painsville. Um, I I struggled, we we discussed internally about if Painsville should even be on the list, because it really didn't comply with the application, but we said, we'll bring it to the board, we'll show it to you, you know, maybe you want to do it, maybe you don't. We aren't uh today, based on the evaluation and the fact that originally the board said we'd like to spend roughly a half million dollars, um, our recommendation as staff is to award the top three. Um, that is above the half million dollars, it is um, it's about seven hundred seventy thousand dollars. Um, the Fairport project is a good project, it ranked below the other three. I I'm just not exactly, my my concern with that one is, it's not a bad project, it's, you know, they thought about it, they put, they put effort to it. It's not gonna serve as many people as the other three, you know, the other three are on much busier routes, there's a lot more pedestrian activity in the area, and I think if we want to do this, we should have a limit where we don't just do everything everyone gives to us, we should say, hey, look, we want to award quality, you know, high-end projects, and we think as staff that the top three really are. Not that Fairport's is bad, it's just not as good as the others. And so after we spent time and kind of debated them as staff, and we had quite a debate um about what we should bring to you for consideration, what projects really warranted it. This is how we came out, again, the board can do whatever it chooses to, you could award none, all, some, i- it's it's up to you.
Question, is there any? Are there any other besides what you know, who's referring to?
These are the, these are the only five applications we received.
Um, thank you, Mr. The whole site for the grant application, and we know that something that did not meet wouldn't we say that was not responsible?
But yes, and and that is what we are, as your staff, functionally telling you, we think that the Painsville Township one is not a responsive. Yeah, but I also. Sure, but I also didn't want to withhold it from the board, if the board said, hey, gosh, we really like it. Yeah, so again, my my objective was to show you where we're at. Um, see if you still want to move forward with it on the November agenda, if there's additional information you would like, we will happily send the presentation out to everybody with a copy of the scoring, uh with a copy of the rubric and our scores with the data that Chuck has asked for, um, or anything else you'd like, I'm happy to answer questions now, really, kind of, you know, uh the world is your oyster.
Are you, will you also be sending us how each project, like not only just the master rubric, but how each project's career, how what their rubric looked like?
Sure. Yeah, we, whatever you would like. Sure.
I have a question, so you mentioned that initially, you're thinking about how many dollars for this? So if the board considered what you're recommending with the seven seventy-seven, where would that additional fund come from?
All of this would come from our current cash balance. So there's, there's, there's plenty of money there to consider thi- this amount or a lower amount, or whatever we want. It it, you could consider it the COVID money if you like to, yes, but it is part of the cash balance. And so um, I guess I would like, is this something the board would like to see on the November agenda for a vote? Are they kind of, are we like, hey, no, thank you, um, just so I have an idea of what to prepare for you? And obviously it can be changed, whatever I put on the agenda, the board can, you know, do whatever.
I'm actually.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay. Um, in the interim, if you want additional details, information, I will put the slideshow up on Govenda, we'll put everything on Govenda. If you'd like it emailed to you or anything separately, let me know, we will get it to you one way or another. And if you want to discuss it or go over it and understand our thought process, feel free to let me know, we'll be happy to chat about it.
But if you want to ask one other question, the board to the board, um, is the board considering increasing the budget from five hundred dollars to to five thirty? The only reason I'm asking is to defend my terminal time to prepare as well as me.
Yeah. I would consider it, I'd like to see the information sent to you.
Yeah, I'll set it out, and the board can always modify it in the meeting, if if you, if you see it, if you, if you see what I present and you don't like it, you can, you can change it there, it's not set in stone at all.
I don't realize that. Uh, it looks like our next thing, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Matt for the financial statement presentation.
Yes, I have.
Absolutely.
Okay, so uh Ted Hargman, year-to-date, August, operating revenue twenty-one point eight million. That's about a hundred K less than budget. Uh, operating expenses are sixteen point eight million, that's about a million and fifty favorable budget. Um, so that gives us a nine hundred fifty K favorable budget operating from. It's important to to mention that this number is inclusive, uh or not inclusive of two months of reduced sales tax. So the July sales tax actually came in higher than we expected, I think it was a carryover from June. Uh, but but predominantly a million dollars dropped every single month. And that is impacting us, it's important to note that, uh you see the net income loss for the year at four oh two. Um, in June, we were at a positive six sixty-seven. So it's definitely impacted us.
What is the total? What is the total to date?
I'm sorry. Uh, I think.
Yes, what?
Impact, what is the total impact to date?
Uh, to date, the impact's about one point five million. And we would have collected, had we not used. But that said, going forward, we expect that to be at least a million every month. Uh, looking at the details, you can see we're favorable on fares and terminals today, we got the sales taxes for the buddy, uh the operating expenses is favorable about a million dollars, nine hundred and five thousand, that is wages and benefits. So everything else kind of washes out very close to the budget, but definitely favorable in the wages and benefits here. Financial balance, uh, cash reserves remain sharp. Lake Tran hit us sixty-two point four million, we committed to twenty-one point three. We had further capital through twenty twenty-eight of ten point four, leaving uh thirty point seven undesigned cash as we sit here uh in August. Yeah, that number will potentially reduce as we get further.
And just to follow up on the question about where additional sidewalk funds would come from, it would come from that undesigned cash line.
Okay, looking at S D S, uh, my office is pretty, pretty small, year-to-date revenue anyone thousand, operating expenses a hundred seventeen for net loss of thirty-six. Uh, it's only four K off the budget, projected loss of thirty-two. Um, you know, I think the important thing about S D S is we have fixed expenses, right? So service, supplies, and insurance, hardly going to fluctuate that much based on, I mean, what we need more of. Um, that happens, we should be closer to approaching uh breaking. Um, maybe I'll drop one again, and we'll see what happens, you know, over the past week. So far, I would say we get more of that against four seventy. If I wanted to do that, if we got rid of our quarterback, maybe clutch. It might be thirty million dollars, whatever. That's my. Um, jockey tag, uh, finally hit the line of the revenue, I've talked in prior four meetings about the revenue being inconsistent, because more importantly, basis, the budget is straight line, so as you can see, for the first time uh this year, we have eclipsed the budget on operating revenue, uh running favorable on expenses, so we have a positive net income of two ninety-three. We break that down a little bit, hundred twenty-one K favorable, which is benefits, hundred K favorable on service and software, about twenty-five K favorable income. Before I go to the next slide, any questions, anything that's a what? One thing I wanted to bring up, we talked about a couple uh meetings ago, was the Ohio Checkbook, when Andy would ask about the payroll in the submissions, so uh reached out to uh the Ohio Checkbook Policy Program Managers, told Ethan West, provided me with the common general statistics, which according to Ethan, fifty percent of all participants submit no payroll data. Twenty-five percent uh submit a summary, and about twenty-five percent submit a detailed payroll file. We did indicate that number is coming down, it says in the detail. Um, occasionally, uh agencies will drop it off and stop submitting it, but um, it is what it is. Uh, they're certainly uh willing and able to help us as much as they can in terms of. They're certainly, uh, willing and able to help us as much as they can in terms of. Uh, the investment format. Complexities of data submissions. Um, we estimate, uh, to develop the, uh. Uh, the 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 report and the format they need, uh, require. Going to be around, uh, five K to ten K for the. Time and effort of an outside, uh, consultant to develop that for us. Now, it doesn't include any. Uh, internal time and efforts production, et cetera, but. All that said, uh, we will certainly do whatever this board recommends in terms of. Putting our payroll data on that.
No, this is optional. So Matt and I have talked about this a lot. We kind of. We wanted to bring it to the board to see what you thought. We are happy to include this data if you would like. The expenses, we have to have a custom report made to export the material correctly. Um, and so I think at this point, we probably are going to look for some direction. The board. Voted last time to, uh, do the Ohio checkbook. I'm not sure if the board would like to vote again, but, um. We, we have done the sort of research and are kind of. Ready and waiting based on your, uh, decision or feedback.
Okay. Well, let's use the same fight size, Chuck's. Let's start with, um. The financial statements. Does anyone have any questions from Matt related to the financial statements?
No, financial statements is not favorable.
We're just talking about the financial presentation, not the Ohio checkbook. Chuck, that is. So related to the financial statements, does anyone have any questions from Matt? At this time, is there a motion to approve the August twenty twenty board? Lake and SDS and Geogod Transit operating financial statements and Lake and Geogod Transit capital plan. All subject to law. Motion made by Mr. Shields. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Zimmel. Thirty, if you could please call her on.
Isma? Stanger? Swanson? Zivel? Dr. Bolivian? Back to me.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll be taking care of that. Now with the Ohio checkbook. It seems we have three options here. One option is Lake Tran does what they're doing right now, and then you have to submit the payroll data. Option two is. You can submit the payroll data for each employee. And then option three is you can do a consolidated submission, which would just maybe be high level total payroll expense or department expense. Matt, did I really those? Directly, exactly. Okay.
Well, I wasn't there a summary in there?
That's the third option, uh, where it's consolidated, summary consolidated. So at this time, so Matt. If the board wanted you to submit, let's say, every piece of information. How many man-hours do you anticipate that would take going forward? Because it sounds like things are different formats and that. So there's internal man-hours and there's external.
Internally, we're probably, uh, uh, looking at, uh. You know, twenty-five, fifty hours.
Where's, where's that for implementation?
Once it's created to submit?
Yes.
Oh, uh, no more than an hour or an hour a month.
Okay. And it looks like your data, as you said, fifty percent submit no data. How many agencies are on the open? I'm not sure. So at this time, I'd like to open up for what anyone's thoughts are on what we would like to do with this going forward. I presume right now, if someone. Says we want to know what employee ABC makes, maybe we chat out to Lake Tran and then Lake Tran provides on that. Same way with any other public records.
Sure, uh, this is, you know, it's public data, so it's publicly requestable. In my tenure in here, we've only received one request the entire time, and it was for, uh, just director level wages. We've never received a request for everybody.
Yeah, I think with what the objective here is to separate the two was resolution for. Doesn't want to be the resolution that we're taking, which should be correct.
Nope, the, you say here that the time estimates prior to experience, potentially developing costs. That find a set out with one-time deal with that. On going.
That's a one-time policy.
The one-time is developed as the mapping market.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, uh, some time to compile data, script the data, uh, does always come up perfectly, so we need sure that. Ties our records and, uh, once we, we have that reconciliation, we then. Submit in the format that they require.
And a theory behind this is. Chuck can access this information from at home. He can go to the Ohio Open Checkbook type of employee ADC. And then it shows what their pay history for the year is then.
Yes, anybody.
Well, if you select the detailed option, if you do the summary, it would not give an employee level.
Correct. The summary option would be, uh, by defined functional areas or departments. We would agree on how we want to see that and we would develop it to that form.
Okay. The summary concept sounds like more work.
Uh, it's equal the amount of work. You're, you're pulling all the exact same data, uh, it's just summary.
We are. Down ask other transit systems are reporting this information and if, so what are they reporting?
Uh, Ethan indicated no transit systems were currently doing this. It was primarily, uh, school systems. All the agencies that were out there, that was very detailed.
We're, we're actually the only transit system on the open checkbook at all.
Are you, you're talking more about the function areas or my departments or not at all? I would agree with that. And we, I, I think it's to our credit that we're ahead of everybody on this crew.
So is there a cost goes to do this functional area though?
Okay, so now it sounds like there is an interest in doing a summary of payroll data. In your proposal, Matt, is that it would be broken down by department? Is that how it would go? Just to make sure everybody on the main page with what the expectations and deliverables will be?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. I currently roll up the financials by department. We were to continue to drill down. Uh, where I present financials, uh, broken up by. Vehicle maintenance, facility maintenance, uh, operations. IT accounting, uh, we have, that would be my reportage. Wouldn't we? Want, uh, just posing a question, wouldn't we want that what we report to be? Representative of our financial side, so it would be relatively easy. I mean, we don't break out. The, what you, the list of different departments that you just, uh, described. It seems to me that what we would want to do is be consistent, relatively consistent. With our finances as, as you report them. Uh, just like our son, so we could just do, uh. Just a summary, one, one big, uh, department.
Yeah.
I would be transparent. As we should be, we should do it very similar to the way the schools and. Or by employee, we're not hiding anything. It's one way to do. Costs the same amount of money to, to do detail, then do the detail. Again, Wayne, I, I don't disagree. Well, we'll do whatever this board determines as the last board. Some people have expressed. Uh, concern that their individual pay tax and pay stuff would. Uh, that information would be out there, but again, nothing to hide. It is what it is, and we'll do what you want to do. That's my part. I guess I don't know why we spend any money to do this if we're already participating. We're just spending more money.
Well, so we're, we spent a similar, actually, we spent a, a lot of effort to get on it the first time because we restructured our entire accounting format. To fit the Ohio checkbook. This, to do this, we have to, they have a very specific format for the reports, so we have to. Create like a, a bridging report to go from our accounting software to theirs to get the, to get the data there. But not for, but not for wages.
Checkbook, but my understanding is there's absolutely no payroll data, probably no roof checkbook.
Right, all our operating expenses. With the exception of the payroll data that is currently. Uh, produced and submitted every month. So we do that right now. There's no additional cost to continually doing that.
But I asked this earlier question, having a minor accounting background, does the report tie out if payroll is not on there even a home country?
Uh, you can easily tie on our expenses and extra payroll. And we do, we basically tie it to our comp's paper. Um, we have a. A summary of all the checks we've written, uh, over any period of time. Uh, in this case, monthly, and we ensure that we'll. To those reports.
Yeah, keep in mind, this is not like. This has nothing to do with budget or anything. All this is, is just like a copy of checks we've written. And so right now, you get a copy of every check we wrote for that period. What, what we're talking about here would be to add a copy of the payroll checks with the person's. Name and salary and all that information.
If anyone really wants that word. Do you want my ready?
I would be very likely to drop the payroll data there, and the company detail.
Well, it's, it's not so much putting out there, it's just paying money to do it, but it's not necessarily.
So you said that. According to your data, according to your conversation with the gentleman who has a checkbook. Half of people don't, public events, not people, don't submit any payroll data, so. Fundarily, as far as like government agencies, fundamentally, government agencies that are on this are schools. So half of the, approximately, half of the schools not submit. Their payroll, their teachers or whatever payroll data. And they are the government, they are the primary government entity that is using Ohio checkbook. So I think there's reason to not follow the model. If that's what the government agencies are, if that's what. Government agencies are doing, that's the model, but then I think there's reason to not continue to follow that model. I agree.
We confirm that there's no other transit.
Sort of Cincinnati Metro used it from two thousand, I think it was two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, and then they stopped. And the main reason originally, a- and I don't want to speak to make this sounding like I'm not in favor of this. Our accounting, it takes, it took Lisa. Several hundred hours to get our accounting to be able to be in the same format to be used for this process. So it is a very onerous activity to, for transit especially, to convert data to use in this. Now, most of our accounts have been converted and they can be used, so this cost is lower. Than, uh, other transit systems. The main reason that, that my peers have communicated to me, and I'm not saying this is a good or a bad reason, is that they have not had enough requests to justify the expenditure. I'm not saying that is a good or a bad reason. That's just what they've communicated to me.
Okay, I think the way we should. I think the way we should proceed is have a vote to see if payroll data should be submitted to the Ohio Open Checkbook. And then if the answer is yes, payroll data should be submitted, then the second vote would be a summary or by the individual level.
Will we clarify in that vote that? We're voting on sharing the data that's already publicly open records available. It's already. You, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want it to seem like we're saying, we don't want to share data. We want to share. It's already publicly, but always ask. It's not like it's not. We're just saying, you want to go above and beyond that and hate to put it somewhere else, I guess.
Sure, yeah, yes. Any other comments, questions? Okay. At this time, is there a motion to support putting the payroll data for Lake Tran? Which is pub, currently publicly available on the Ohio Open Checkbook. So, motion made by Mr. Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hayes. A yes will be you are voting to supply. Payroll data that is already publicly available to the Ohio Open Checkbook. A no is we will remain, the data will be publicly available, just not on the open checkbook. Three, can you please call the roll?
Isma? Seeks?
Yes.
Stanger?
No.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zivel?
No.
Dr. Bolivian?
No.
Back to me?
No.
Luchaya?
No.
Okay, at this time, we will continue our current, um, process of operating. And payroll data will not be submitted to the Ohio checkbook, but again, a public records request will help anyone to obtain that.
I would just add informally that. A public records request is always night, but if someone contacts us and doesn't use the correct format or something like that, we still give them the data. So we try to be as open a- as we possibly can be. So just thought I'd throw that out there. Sorry.
Item is, um, gasoline tank, and I will click when I turn it back over to you then.
Yeah, sorry for interrupting you. Uh, we have today before us, uh, something we've talked about quite a bit at this point, which is a, uh, upgrade to our gasoline, uh, tank system. So we have a four thousand gallon gas tank, and it was appropriate for when it was installed in two thousand sixteen for our fleet of sixteen buses. Um, as a general operating rule, we try to keep one week's worth of fuel, uh, on property for all of our modes of service. Um, diesel, electric, gas, electric, I guess you can't really say electric because you can't thaw it that easily. But gas, diesel, and propane all, uh, abide, typically try to abide by that plan. Both diesel and propane do currently abide by that plan. Gasoline, we take several deliveries a week, so we are not currently meeting that objective. Gasoline has grown over time as a source of fuel for us, mainly because as we have pushed a- as hard as we can. For small vehicles, the smaller you get, the more chance they run on gasoline. A propane system is too big to fit in most of our small vehicles. So we have quite a number of them that run on gasoline. Uh, we expect that fleet to be about sixty buses or sixty vehicles by the time we right-size it. These are things like, keep in mind, the types of vehicles these are is the minivans, the, the vans, um, even the smaller. The smallest of the cutaway buses, just their chassis aren't big enough to put propane on them, and so they are powered by gasoline. Um, to support a fleet of sixty and maintain a one-week inventory of fuel along with. The amount of labor and sort of cutting it close that occurs with the current, uh, system, w- we need a fifteen thousand gallon tank. Um, Keith Baer, before he left, did these calculations. They've been supported by Nick, which I'll also take the opportunity to introduce as part of this presentation. He's over there in the blue. Uh, shirt. Nick Varelli is our new director of maintenance, so he's going to help me answer questions that I might not know, uh, if they come up. But we, we do struggle right now where the tank gets down to a couple hundred gallons before it gets refilled. You know, i- it's not like the fuel vendor is sitting at their yard with a truck ready to fill us up on a moment's notice. And when you go through four, five hundred gallons in a day, you can go from having enough to not having enough pretty quickly. So we, uh, spent some time figuring out what to do. Uh, we originally went with a traditional design bid build process to try and. Uh, get the right-sized tank. We hired CT consultants to do a design for us. We went to bid. Um, the prices were sort of way off from where CT estimated them, so we canceled the bid. Kind of recuperated with each other, had an internal conversation, talked to some of our peers. And said, okay, with the technical level of complexity of this project, how should we, we move forward? And so we used a, a newer process to Lake Tran, not necessarily new to the world, which is called design build. And that's where you hire a design build firm, which is. A, uh, a company that can do both the construction and the. that can do both the construction and the architecture. Usually a construction company will hire an architect to help them get across the finish line. Um, in this case, um, we got some good responses from people that have a lot of experience with gas tanks. And, um, we used them to discuss our problem, how we could solve it. And the, the tank installer and the architect worked with us in a joint fashion onsite to talk about how we can accomplish this goal in the most cost-effective, uh, means possible. And so, um, that's the process we used. It was a little different. We were a little nervous about it because it was different, but it proved to be the right sort of path for this project. Um, I want to do a little bit of analysis. So I, I talked about this a while ago, um, at the request of the board, but I've updated it based on the actual prices we have before you. So right now, when we receive a load of gasoline, um, it is always delivered as a partial semi-truck. A full semi-truck typically can deliver about ten thousand gallons. It's usually a little under that. It's like ninety-five hundred. So when you have a partial load, we pay under current contract, two sixty-six a gallon. Um, if we were to have that delivered by a, a, a single tank truck where you're paying for a full load, the contract price is two thirty-eight a gallon. So the difference between those two is, is twenty-seven cents a gallon. So there is a, a sort of meaningful difference between having a partial load of fuel delivered and a, a whole load. We typically buy about two thousand gallons, I'm sorry, two hundred thousand gallons annually. And so if you look at what this saves us on an annual basis, uh, you can see the math that I, I put out for you right there. If we get all partial loads like we are now, we're spending about five hundred thirty-two thousand. If you're taking all full loads like we would in, in this upgraded scenario, you're at four seventy-seven. So you save fifty-four thousand dollars a year. This delta is likely to grow as the cost of fuel increases because the reason they prefer to do a single load is, you know, they're making one stop, they're maximizing their profit on that one, uh, trip with that truck. And so as fuel prices increase, you're likely to see a slightly greater amount. I'm not saying you're gonna see a huge, huge change in it. And so if the project, uh, were, if we spend every penny that we have asked the board of, um, the return on investment would be about eight point eight years. Um, which is a little bit longer than we would have liked to see. Keep in mind, that price has a fifty thousand dollar contingency for if something goes wrong. And this project is also grant funded. So if you look at only the, the local dollars that are coming out of this, the ROI is about two and a half years. Um, fuel tanks like this typically last twenty-five to thirty years. The diesel tanks that are underground behind Lake Tran are still in good ser, uh, good shape and are used every day. They are thirty years old. So this is an asset that has a long life. And so in theory, we will be getting paid back by this investment for a long time. And so, uh, we went through the process. This is kind of a little repeat of that. But the, um, we hired Collins Equipment and Diamond Z Engineering to be the design build team. Um, their design cost would be about forty thousand dollars with a construction cost of right around four hundred thousand dollars. We have a twelve percent contingency included. Just because this is our first time with design build, we're a little nervous. There could be more unforeseen circumstances, although there really shouldn't be. It's a pretty simple project. Um, so hopefully we wouldn't use any of that. Um, you just never know. Um, this is funded by a fifty-three thirty-nine A grant, which is a Formula Capital Facilities Grant. So the Lake Tran total share is about a hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So if you do the ROI on just the Lake Tran share, you're about two point three years, I think, is what it comes out to. But, you know, I don't like to look at just the Lake Tran share. It is all taxpayer dollars. I tend to look at the whole number, uh, together. But, um, yeah, so we are before you today to recommend that we move forward with the projects at a cost not to exceed four eighty-four seven hundred. Be happy to answer any questions.
Um, Mario, you didn't say.
Three eighty-nine.
Three eighty-nine.
Yeah. That was our initial cost estimate. We, it was a little lower than we had planned. Um, CT helped us with that and they were off in the bid process. They were off in the estimating process, uh, which is also why you do not see them recommended as part of the design engineering team today.
So all the time. Are you such that all the time? We're saving fifty-four thousand dollars.
Each year, we accept a full load of fuel delivery over a partial load of fuel delivery. We should save approximately fifty-four thousand dollars. Yes. I would look to Nick to help me answer that question.
We've run out of gas about three times. The delivery issues will require. Um, it's hard for us to be trying to order, you know, forty-eight hours and all this. Um, sometimes they get, you know, within that forty-eight hours, we have enough residual left. But we see that more and more every year. We have two suppliers. We use one supplier, uh, Gladio. Um, they essentially send who they can at that time. I've had to order fuel from a local vendor before to cover that gap. And that's a street pop price.
Yeah, if we, the one supplier we have is at our contracted low price. So if we use another vendor, we pay street price, which is significantly higher than these prices.
And what does that checkbook?
Uh, the minivans, the VT threes, if you know what that is, the smaller coach and equipment manufacturing buses take it, along with all of the transit front-end vans. So there's about fifty-four vehicles today that take gasoline, plus all the support vehicles that also take gasoline.
And what do you do when you take that long?
Maintenance does the best they can, but it, that's the answer. The worst-case scenario is we order a tank of fuel at market rate and we pay about a buck more a gallon.
Where is, where do you advise it?
It will, it will be right next to the current, uh, fuel system. So it will connect to the current dispensers and everything.
With the old tank again?
It'll still stay there.
Right.
Long-term, it, it may be interconnected temporarily, but long-term, yes, it would be removed. Twenty-five thirty. There are design complexities that I don't have the best answer to, but we, we can, but they sort of recommend it against doing that. So I, we would probably try to auction it and recoup some cash.
That seems to be an awful lot different to see, partial and full. I was in this business for a while, not recently, but within the last five years. Uh, I don't, don't see, don't remember seeing a large differential like that. Now, again, it's a whole load or partial load. So I'd like to see a little more information on where those numbers come from.
That's just in the fuel contract that the bidder bids on. Uh, we can happily give you that contract. There, there isn't really supporting data. It's just the prices they bid it.
Inside that call. You know, I'm not sure if I think it's for either bank or tech. Um, yeah, just a clarification. Just talking about the pricing.
Sure.
Um, well, we have an, we, we sign up for the consortium or something. Is that the pricing you try to argue out there?
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, this is the pricing from the fuel consortium we enter into every year. I will say, we have a similar cost differential in our propane, uh, project, which is why the propane tank is thirty thousand gallons. When we went through the design and engineering process, we specifically addressed this issue to try and drive that price down. Because I think they were above thirty cents a gallon in differential between a partial truck and a full truck.
Okay, any other questions to come? Twenty twenty-four dash oh two seven, authorizing this CEO or his designate to enter into and execute a design build contract with Collins Corporation and Diamond Z Engineering for the purchase and installation of a gasoline fuel tank at a cost not to exceed four hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. Seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred and seventy. The wording doesn't.
Yeah, it doesn't. Which one is it? Seven hundred, so the number is correct? The word is correct. I'm sorry.
That's one you'll make any card. I have to exceed four hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. So unless I miss my, is there a second? If I was Stanger, I think she won the war there. Um, I will, I'll try to, if you can just call the roll.
Isma?
Yes.
Sheets?
No.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanton?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Dr. Blavin?
Yes.
Mactomy?
Yes.
Ochaiya?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That has been approved. And then I will turn the meeting over to Andrea to talk about grants.
Good evening. Um, so this is, um, an annual authorization that, um, we come to the board for every year. Um, there's actually two. They're very similar, but, um, this is to, um, provide Lake Tran and help the ability to, um, apply for, um, statewide grants. So the state is clear to begin on July one and end on the Thursday. So this is your state display year twenty twenty-six, which will begin next July. Um, and so welcome to this call today for the state visitor programs, the state applications. They will open on Friday and when we do the seventh of the day first. So, um, Lake Tran and Chiaoca Transit apply for statewide funding, um, for various programs. There's, um, urban transit program, rural transit program, Ohio Transit Partnership. Um, we have not applied for this grant recently, but there's also the Ohio EPA has the Diesel Conduction Grant. We just don't have any diesel vehicles that qualify. Um, and then also Laaco's, um, transportation for local communities grant. Um, we, at Lake Tran, you state funding for, um, maintenance, vehicles, construction, pilot projects. Um, Chiaoca Transit is heavily reliant on state funds. Um, they receive grant funding to, um, maintain their operations, to, um, prevent a maintenance of utility and facilities, and, um, any and all, um, equipment and capital purchases. Um, so, uh, it is our recommendation, um, that the board approve, um, this resolution so that Lake Tran can apply for statewide grants. And I have a lot of transit. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh twenty-eight, authorizing the filing of applications on the capital Lake Tran and Chiaoca Transit with the Ohio Department of Transportation and and many and all state agencies for state display year twenty twenty-six transportation grants for grants to the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, and the State of Ohio as authorized under federal transit laws and state of Ohio laws, and therefore executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon approval. Question made by Mr. Mactomy. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Zibble. Pretty, if you could please call the roll.
Isma?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanton?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Dr. Blavin?
Yes.
Mactomy?
Yes.
Ochaiya?
Yes.
Will we go out and talk about the purchase of new utility vehicles?
Uh, this is our routine request on an annual basis to keep our utility vehicle fleet in good condition. I would be happy to go over it in additional detail, but I see our time. Um, this is a pretty standard thing. We replace some vehicles every year. Um, they're used for a number of different things. We've been buying Ford Escapes. The main difference between what we wanted to do in the past and what we do now is we ask for the board's approval before we get the specific vehicle and price identified because dealers still just won't hold the price for us. So we use this budget and we go buy vehicles. It's funded by a grant, again, fifty-three thirty-nine A, uh, and the budget is seventy-seven thousand dollars. I know that's kind of fast. I'm happy to answer questions. I can go over anything else you'd like, but this is a pretty normal purchase. Uh, typically what we do is we go through, we, we look at the Ohio bid prices. We talk to our local dealers to try and get them to match or beat the price so that we don't have to buy it from someone out of county. Uh, the target is Ford Escapes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um, we have a, a sort of a regression system where the vehicle starts with one purpose and it moves its way through the fleet till it gets to the bus drivers for a relief vehicle. Typically, by the time we get rid of them, they're around a hundred fifty thousand miles and they're, they're pretty beat. Once they get to the bus drivers, they, uh, they've seen better days. That, yeah, sometimes, yes.
It's our most chapter of my resolution, twenty twenty-four dash oh twenty-nine, authorizing the CEO or his designate to purchase two utility vehicles that are costing not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars. Question made by Mr. Zibble. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Blavin. Pretty, if you could please call the roll.
Isma?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanton?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Dr. Blavin?
Yes.
Mactomy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you guys are up. Let's go for a third. Um, let's talk about that first.
Yeah, so I gave the board a little bit of an update last meeting about this. Um, this is a mildly frustrating topic, but with a great final end goal. I did want to take a second. I know we're running a little late, but, um, I wanted to talk about our, our sort of long-term, how we've been handling cash and what our vision is. Um, a- at a high level, cash is very expensive for a transit system to manage. Uh, the fare box on a bus that you step up to are now about twenty-seven thousand dollars apiece, which is just bananas. Yeah, those are twenty-seven thousand dollars apiece. You and me both. Um, we bought ours in two thousand nine. They were originally installed in every Lake Tran vehicle, so fixed route, commuter express, and dial-a-ride. We took them out of the dial-a-ride buses in two thousand nineteen and we have, we put them in the mezzanine and we said that we have eighty of these. These are great parts for the future. That's where they still sit. The fare box we have in the buses today is, has been obsolete for several years. They don't manufacture parts. We keep them running with the buses in, or the parts in the mezzanine and our plan is to do that for as long as humanly possible. At the same time, we have been moving away from cash being handled on the bus. As you can imagine, you know, you have drivers involved, you have customers involved. It's just a clunky process. So now dial-a-ride is all, when you book your trip, you pay, just like an airline. Um, that has worked very well. That has, there's no fair dispute with the customer. If we send the bus, the trip is paid for. It has been a great operational, uh, enhancement. We used to have times we'd send the bus and the person couldn't find their money and the bus would leave. And so doing prepay has been great. It also saved us a replacement cost that was very high. Um, we still have forty-eight of those fare boxes in service in our park-and-ride buses and our local route buses. So, but just for reference, by not replacing the fare boxes on dial-a-ride buses, we saved about two point three million dollars, which we're very happy with on top of the operational, um, increases. What we are doing now is now that we've kind of taken care of dial-a-ride, the next step is how do you deal with local route service and park-and-ride service? So the solution that we are working on, which includes these ticket vending machines, is to have ticket vending machines at the park-and-rides and pull the fare boxes off of the park-and-ride buses. So there's twenty, uh, fare boxes on park-and-ride buses. And our eventual goal, which has been done in the state of Ohio, is to remove fare boxes from local route buses. So that a customer, there's still no cash box on the bus, but there's a scanner. So we have a little scanning device right now on all the buses. Those cost about twelve hundred bucks. When you buy your fare on your phone and you tap it on that device, your fare is handled. It's all electronic. It's very seamless. It's very cost-effective. There are, uh, regulations for the Federal Transit Administration, mainly Title Six, that you have to still be able to accept cash. But it doesn't mean you have to accept cash on the bus. So again, we still have forty-eight fare boxes in use on the buses. Multiply that by twenty-seven thousand dollars, plus some spares. It's a big expenditure. What we are pursuing, and Dayton has modeled this for the state, so we know it can be accomplished, is you put ticket vending machines in key locations so that if customers are using cash, they can still interact with that piece of equipment and pay their fare with cash. But we, uh, right now are envisioning five of these, maybe six, out in the community. They're a little more expensive than a fare box. They're massively cheaper though than a fare box in every bus. And so ODOT is, has been very supportive of this project and is supporting transit systems for doing it. So they fully awarded grant funds for us to buy five. Um, so they fully awarded grant funds for us to buy five ticket vending machines. The original process was that the, all that money would be awarded to NeoRide and then, which is a, a council of governments in Ohio, and then they would just hand us a fare box. It was going to simplify the process for ODOT with one vendor, one procurement, and just make it easier. Midway through the process, ODOT changed their mind and now they want all those ticket vending machines to come to the agencies individually and the agencies write a check for those ticket vending machines after the state sends us the money. So they are still one hundred percent grant funded. But normally, we would not ask to buy something that's actually already sitting on the property. So we have those in our building right now. Normally would say, hey, board, do we want these? And the board would say yes or no. Since they were just free being given to us by NeoRide, we weren't going to have to do that, but if we have to cut a check, we do. And so they are a critical component of our long-term sort of cash-free vision. But um now they require board approval because of the way ODOT would like us to flow the money. Um, but they are here today. Um, not replacing the fare boxes on park-and-ride buses will save us about four hundred or five hundred forty thousand dollars and, and, and an incremental amount on the local route buses. So they still do save a ton of money, e- even if for some reason we didn't complete the local route removal, they still save a, a ton of money. Our plan to finish the cash-free process is we uh received a grant from ODOT to do a fare equity study, which is required by the federal government if you want to go cash-free. The study would tell us any other additional steps we may need to do to go cash-free. Typically, it is a rubber stamp that says you can do it. You already figured out all the details, but it's required as part of the Federal Transit Administration's Title Six regulations. So that is in our capital budget, which we will present to you next month for next year, that will hopefully allow us to complete the cash free onboard the bus process. Uh, the other thing I didn't mention is fares on the bus are the number one dispute between a passenger and a driver. So removing that exchange is also beneficial for us long run. So there's not a driver and a, a bus, a passenger arguing about the, the fare amount. So it's, it's, in my opinion, this is a win-win uh for, for everybody. It's more operationally efficient for us and saves money. So. Um, it's been done, so I'm gonna date, date an RTA. They, with the use of ticket vending machines is their main one. Um, well, it's, it's, I guess I shouldn't say it's not really cashless because you can still use cash at the ticket machine. It's just not cast, cash on the bus. So I'm, I misunderstood. If we went that route, that's where it would, it would go, yes. Well, there will be a component where we, there'll be, once the report is complete, we'll come back to the board and say, hey, look, we can do this. Do you want us to? Um, for park-and-ride, ninety seven percent of our customers, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, i- it'll be, there'll be a component of do we want to do this? For sure. Um, our current plans are at the Wicklow Park and Ride, the Lakeland Transit Center, uh, Painesville Transit Center, Manner Park and Ride, and Shorgate. Yeah, I mean, we would go through a pretty extensive testing process and probably get community feedback too. So there'd be, there'd be a lot to it. I mean, it's, it would be a, a pretty comprehensive study.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and that's what we hope this system for fixed route will, will mirror, will do that same thing and make it easier for everybody.
Okay.
Approved, approved, resolution twenty twenty four dash oh three oh, authorizing the CEO or his designated to enter into and execute a contract with the Bonneville to purchase five ticket vending machines for installation at Lake Tran facilities that are costing not to exceed one hundred thirty five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Motion made by Miss Mattingham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Ochaiya. Trudy, if you could please call the board.
Isma?
Yes.
Sheets?
There are three.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Dr. Blaiman?
Yes.
Maxime?
Yes.
Ochaiya?
Yes.
Okay, thank you everyone very much. This panel event is very recent. Next month.
Uh, November budget presentation, December budget approval. February HVAC maintenance. February, the one I wanted to bring up as a discussion option is Board Strategic Planning Activity Day. Um, with a, hopefully not a meeting afterwards. This does not need to be February. My intent was just to get a conversation started and hear feedback and thoughts. I know this is, the board has expressed desire in the past to have one of these on an annual basis. February seemed like a good time when everyone's not running outside to do activities. So I put it on here. I'd love to know what you think. Um, I'd love to hear what you'd like to talk about. Uh, if the board would like to tell me, I tell them. You know, it's, it's a very open-ended thing right now. Um, one of the things we, as your staff, think is very important to talk about in this day is going to be uh what we do with park-and-ride. Um, it, it, in my opinion, it needs some adjustment. Um, you know, ridership is doing better than most of our peers, but uh, it's probably never going to be what it was again. So we need to have some kind of long talks about that.
Um, on the strategic planning day, uh, if I, I was very much a proponent of doing this in the winter as opposed to premium in September, which is only done before when there's very heavy current Seattle. Um, so I think early in the year is nice for Northeast Ohio when it's not beautiful outside. Um, but if you have a topic that's important to you, because a couple of folks have already reached out to me about something like the possibly discussed, please have the notes pinned in it. So it can be incorporated into an agenda for the day. So I agree, so we can at least be able to follow something in that case. So we'll see as thorough time of our.
Um, March, we have rider alert software. This is to um consolidate all of the backend things Julia uses to alert our riders. It is not a pretty process and it's very labor-intensive. And as we try to do more and more of this to keep people informed, um, our objective is to improve that process. One of the main complaints we get about now is that if you're signed up for our alerts, we send you alert for anything that happens at all. So if you only ride Route One, you get an alert for every route we have, dial-a-ride and everything. It can be kind of annoying. But part of the purpose of this is to allow customers to select sort of favorites so that they're not getting bombarded. So like, if you're not riding Route One at five in the morning, you don't get a text message at five telling you that the Route One is detoured. So um, the main, one of the main drivers of this is really enhance the customer experience. Uh, it does make Julia's life a little easier, but really it's about the customer experience. Um, May, we have the uh PTAS, which is the annual safety plan we ask to be reviewed, and we have no items at this time for May. Does anyone have any questions? I know that was fast, but yeah. Seeing none, I'm just going to roll right into the zero port unless you tell me not to. Um, HQ Project is still on schedule. They finished the driveway, thank goodness. That was a very painful process. I know all of you experienced that uh at the last meeting. Um, the remainder of the construction is still on schedule. Uh, my intent is still to have a board meeting in the new board meeting, board room in December. Um, IT strategic plan is now, the IT department is now fully staffed and we successfully onboarded our last hiring class using our UKG software, which is our HRAS software. Uh, the next step is the timekeeping part, which is probably the most complex part, but we are moving along with that uh well. Novus and Same-Day Dial-A-Ride, um, which is probably going to be branded Rides On Demand. Um, we moved the date back again due to some technical issues. TripSpark has been um challenged by some of our uh desires, but we are pretty confident it will now launch in November, so we'll keep you up to date when that actually happens. Um, our STS service to the Browns has been a, a little disappointing, kind of like the team's performance. Um, uh, we're currently averaging about twenty to twenty-five people. Um, our plan is going to sit down and talk about it at the end of the season, see what went well, see what we can improve and talk about how we may want to roll that out for uh the future. Um, strategic planning as a, a generalization, um, I took my team to a leadership retreat where we could talk about, you know, what we think the future has in it and what the uh next things for us need to be. Um, one of the things I chose to do was to give them sort of Ben's guiding principles to how we should be making decisions as a team. So I sent this uh all of you as part of my uh leadership retreat, so or, or, or as part of my um report this month. So this is sort of a good, I thought it would be good for us as staff to have like, these are the things that we should be considering in every decision. They should all include at least one of these things. And the better we do it, kind of focusing our decisions long-term, I think the better we will be as an organization. And so part of this was to communicate to them what my expectations are for them and have something public that we can be like, this is the reason we picked uh, we moved this project forward. Um, Julia helped me create this graphic after I kind of gave her some handwritten notes, which was very appreciative. Our transit, uh, I don't know if any of you saw the news recently, but we, we launched Jocka Transit Wheels To Work program, which was really exciting for them. Um, we had a lot of uh representatives from the state show up for their ribbon cutting of this service. This is going to provide a quite a bit of additional service for them, um, for the Amish community. So for them, it's, it's three buses, but that's about a thirty percent increase in service, which is going to be a big deal for their employees there. Um, and then the uh Office of Transit on the Grant Tracker has designated the uh total urban transit uh formula to us. We received about nine hundred forty thousand dollars, which is about double what they normally send us. The small urban, which is a category of transit system in Ohio, transit systems have not been spending their money appropriately through the years. So ODOT gave a one-time double payment to all of the bigger transit systems that do spend their money. So uh, we got four hundred fifty thousand dollars without asking. Uh, thank you, ODOT. Um, the great person in your packet, I went through really quickly. Um, Matt will also go quickly through his presentation, I'm sure, so we can.
All right, so we're going to be looking at August four fourth. Uh, we're leaving days in August twenty-four versus August twenty-three, so there's no way to do that way. Um, that ride decreased by two percent with equal operating, operating days, it would be up by one percent. Global round, the increase of six percent, equal operating days. Park-and-ride decreased by twenty-nine percent, but with equal operating days, it would be up by two percent. Any questions? Move on to the next one. The extended service hours, um, I've seen a little bit of a dip in um in our evening, evening uh service there, but uh pretty much on par with what we've been seeing all along. There's obviously peaks and valleys all year. And denials aren't remaining well. That is the end of our report. Any questions? Day nine, is there any old business in the room tonight? Also, day nine, is there any new business in the room tonight? Mr. Sheets?
Has two major responsibilities. First, to ensure the agency is efficient and this is a responsible matter, and second, to assist the agency if the board has an expertise the agency provides or needs. I'm sure that any board member will be willing to help Lake Tran if called upon. However, to get an idea of how we are doing in the first responsibility, I believe the board should ask the state auditor to come to the next board meeting and give us a presentation on what an efficiency performance on would entail and cost. I propose that as a resolution.
Um, are you able to give a very brief explanation of what the auditor's efficiency and performance audit would be?
That's why they would come here for nothing to explain, but that's what I said, we uh would entail and cost. They do this. They do this throughout.
Okay, so um, are you asking for the board to discuss at this time? If the board is in favor of bringing the state auditor into doing a presentation on what an efficiency and performance audit would um be for Lake Tran?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any discussion anyone would like to have, comments, feedback?
Has this ever been done with a transit system?
Uh, Ms. Mattingham asked if this has ever been done with a transit system to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, they don't really have it.
I'm sorry, do you?
Yes, he was told that has been.
We don't.
Frank, can we get again, um, is it possible for then to get some information on what the system is so we can look at it? Talk about it, like an executive session?
Well, this, this is a no uh no commitment after anything on the auditor. They want to do any, tell us what they're talking about as far as that of efficiency performance audit, what it entails and what it would cost. They, they do this though, I'm saying.
So you would like the auditor to come here and do a presentation on what inefficiency and performance audit could be for Lake Tran?
Or would they? Yes.
Okay.
And that's a no commitment or anything? I like their answer. They're going to tell you what they would do.
Is this information that is available on the auditor's website or online information somewhere?
I don't have any question.
It, it, they're just going to come and provide general information regarding like what the audit is? Is that something where they have a website, uh, within the auditor's website? Do they have information about the audit online? And they're not doing something specific to Lake Tran? They're just getting general information?
That's all it is.
No.
And the organization and the efficiency of performance audit. Just tell me, tell me how they want to pay, how they want to cost. It's the same thing that we did with the uh um IT performance, I mean. We like to know. How are we doing? Are we all okay? Are we all good? This is just to take a look at the organization. And we have audited by the state. Um, on the auditor and all. I know we're going to try and analyze from the effect, right?
So we, we are audited by the state, um, mainly from a financial perspective on an annual basis. Um, it does include some IT oversight about password management and stuff, but is focused on um financials. And then every three years, the, we, we call the triennial as a part where the Federal Transit Administration uh does a comprehensive audit of basically everything we do. We just had ours last year. We had, we scored, we got a perfect score.
Things comprehensive of them include more than just looking at value, you know, about.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, it is. There are twenty-three areas of review that take place. They talk about a lot of federal compliance. Um, they review our, the biggest area that they review is our reporting to the National Transit Database. And they, you know, that will generate sort of automatic issues that say, hey, this is inefficient. Why are you doing this kind of thing? But it reviews everything we do. I mean, literally everything we do.
Could you share that with us?
Sure. Yeah, Andrea, just wrap it up. We just got the letter the other day saying no deficiencies. Uh, not, not even that many days ago, but we'd be happy to, if you'd like the whole report, if you'd like the summary, the executive summary, whatever the board would like, be happy to present it. We can even present it if you like in the meeting, go over it or whatever, whatever you'd like. Sure. Andrea, can you add to us? They were here a couple of months ago. They sat in this room.
Okay, so are there any more questions or comments about the efficiency and performance?
Okay, so are there any more questions or comments about the efficiency and performance audit?
Is it just a general inquiry or is there a specific? I don't know. I don't know. Um, I don't know. Looking back at what I've talked and you're going to do. It's pretty good. Something that you should do is more, and I'm sure we're going to be able to do.
That's a good one.
Well, yeah, we was a whole evaluation.
I don't say no.
I mean.
Nothing to go on.
My duty is, uh, they can't hurt to hear what they have to say. That, that is my duty. We, we're no commitment for us to, to act upon it. So they'll hurt to hear what they have to say. Maybe they can bring some value to this.
Okay, any other questions, comments, feedback? Okay, so is there a motion to have the, a representative from the Ohio State Auditor's Office come to the November meeting, November twenty twenty-four meeting to do a presentation on what inefficiency and performance audit would be for Lake Train? And again, this is not binding Lake Train to doing this. This is just an informational presentation on what inefficiency and performance audit would be. Is there a motion? So the one motion made by Mr. Sheets is our second.
Awesome.
Second by Mr. Swanson. A yes vote signifies you are supporting the state auditor's office sending a representative to our next meeting. A no vote signifies you are not supporting it. Rudy, if you could please call the roll.
Eastmore?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
No.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
No.
Dr. Glaven?
Yes.
Nexme?
No.
Oh, China?
No.
Okay, we are at a four to four period. Please put me down for a yes. Okay, at the next meeting, we will have an informational only presentation from the state auditor on what inefficiency and performance audit would be for Lake Train. Mr. Sheets, are you wanting to arrange this? And you may need to do it in conjunction with Mr. Capow as well for setting the agenda and for the information.
Um, I can do it or you can audit the board chair.
Um, why don't we talk offline, Mr. Capow and Mr. Dinesh about the best way to move forward?
True.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other new business? Okay, at this time, is there a motion to return today's board trust meeting?
Oh.
Motion made on this, please, our second.
Okay.
Right, but this one, please call the roll.
Eastmore?
Please.
Yeah.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Dr. Glaven?
Yes.
Nexme?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. We're open to your comments. We are at, uh, six forty-one, yeah.